Okay, I don't see anybody in the camp. I'd like to get this meeting started promptly. My name is Rafer Pellegrino. I'm an attorney. I'm also the manager of 401 Liberty LLC, which is the tenant and the developer of the property we're here to discuss today, located at 298 Federal Street in Greenfield. I want to welcome the mayor, city councilors, those of you who are petitioners, and the general public, anybody else who's present here today. The purpose of this PIP meeting is to provide information, to listen to concerns of petitioners, and to, when possible, answer questions that petitioners or others have. In preparation for this meeting, we've reached out and spoken with many of the individuals who are included on the petition. We've taken down their concerns. We have gone through those, and those will be assembled as part of our PIP draft, which will be circulated. As a matter of course, we'd like to do a brief historical presentation of how this process gets started and where we are today. We then like to have our licensed site professional from O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin, who's present on this site, Bruce Nicholson, who will present with respect to some of the common questions that we received. And what we try to do is assemble those so that he can address broad areas. And then after we're done the presentation, we'll have an ability to take field questions from anybody who's interested in asking questions. Before I go on, I need to inform everybody this meeting is being recorded by the City of Greenfield and 401 Liberty Street LLC. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time.
Dawn Moran is recording.
Dawn Moran.
Mary Bird is as well.
Hang on a second. I just need to get them down. Dawn Moran. And who was the second person?
Mary Bird.
Mary Burns. Anyone else? Okay, here I'm done. I'll move forward with the meeting. Now, this process started back in 2012 when a notice of contamination was filed with Mass DEP. The City of Greenfield was dealing with a defunct property owner who ultimately went into bankruptcy. The City of Greenfield started working with DEP to deal with the problems at the site. DEP came in and played an active role, which is rather unusual, in assisting with the initial site analysis and cleanup. Subsequently, we came into the scene, when I say we, 401 Liberty LLC. Sometime in 2013, we learned of the site. There was a request for proposals that was put out. As I understand it, we were the only bidder for obvious reasons. This was a vacant site at the time the City took control of it that had potential to cause problems for sites located around it. The Mass DEP worked with the City to start to deal with some of the processes to understand environmental impact. We were ultimately named the successful bidder through the RFP for 401 Liberty Street, and we became an active participant in the process with DEP. Either shortly before we were named the successful bidder or shortly after, we began attending meetings and working in cooperative fashion with the City of Greenfield, Mass DEP, and the federal branch of Environmental Protection, the EPA, became involved. EPA cooperated with DEP, actively came out to the site and remediated over 1,400 tons of contaminants from the site, performed testing in neighboring sites to determine if there was risk to surrounding properties and played an active role, which is somewhat unusual. In response to this PIP that's been filed, there have been numerous inquiries to Mass DEP. In an effort to clarify some of the initial questions, Mass DEP and the specific individual is Elizabeth Steinhardt, drafted a letter and sent it to one of the lead petitioners, Glenn Ayers, dated January 21st, 2022. I hope that if you haven't seen it, you'll take the time to find this letter after today's PIP meeting because it outlines many of the central questions that have been asked repetitively. And I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes on that because it goes into the historical context of how we got to where we are. The goal for 401 Liberty Street was to come in as a private entity to work cooperatively with the City to remediate the site, to get it to a functional level so it can be put back on the tax rolls and be developed for use. At the time, Franklin County had one of the highest opiate death rates in the state per capita without one treatment facility in the area. We had developed a path to develop substance abuse centers, social service networks, to try to assist with some of these problems plaguing the community. This process, as you may imagine, we have approximately 100,000 square foot vacant complex consisting of approximately 11 acres, two condominium units, at least two condominium units, one of which was still owned by another private entity, and an empty parcel of field. The property was divided up. The City was able to build a ball field. Part of our commitment to the City was assisting that and giving money and time developing a mini family park, which has occurred on the site adjoining what is now known as 298 Federal Street. The second part of 298 Federal Street is Unit A. Unit A consists of now the DTA facility and CSO, which is something that was not owned by the City at any time during this process. So I'm going to focus on Unit B, and then at times I'll talk about Unit A. For purposes of this discussion, Unit A, there have no contaminants found in Unit A. There is no remedial action taking place on Unit A, and it's really not a focus of this, shouldn't be a focus of this conversation, although at the end, we're happy to address any concerns. As I told you, the Mass DEP laid out in this letter dated January 21st, and it talks a little bit about some of the things I've summarized for you. But what it also talks about is their, DEP's, understanding of the progress, the remediation that's taking place. Now, it's kind of important to just take a step back for a minute. We're looking at 11-year period of time that the City has been actively aggressively working on the site. The City, as a non-contributing owner of a property, has certain protections under Mass General Law 21E and different statutes, which I won't get into at this point, as does 401 Liberty Street as a tenant and possession. Both parties have worked to get this to a stage where we can get to a final completion, if you will. Now, preliminarily, and Bruce will explain in more detail, I'm going to give you just an overview of what's occurred. Testing has occurred in the residential neighbors, downgrading of the site. There's been extensive testing by EPA, DEP, and O'Reilly and Talbot and Oakin. There have been questions about how the company of O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin got involved in this site, who they work for, what their role is. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 21E, describes the process by which private LSP licensed site professionals are entrusted with the obligations of dealing with contaminated sites. O'Reilly and Talbot and Oakin is a well-respected entity that works statewide and beyond. They had been working with Lund Silver Smith, the prior owner of the property, on the site. When the City took control, the City retained O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin to assist them with their remediation, understanding the scope of it. And when we became the successful RFP, the City's request was, could we use a common LSP for two reasons? One, not to have duplicative efforts, and two, obviously for cost reasons. We agreed to use O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin. There was a prior LSP on the site before Bruce Nicholson, who would work for many years, who since left the company. And Bruce has now been involved for quite some period of time. So that hopefully answered some of those questions about the parties' roles, how O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin is involved in this, and what the role of the licensed site professional is. Now, what has transpired going back a bit is the remediation we talked about with DEP and EPA, which is the removal of contaminants. Now, why is that important? It's important for two reasons. Number one, those are the contaminants from which any environmental contaminants may migrate from. So it's important to remove 1,400, over 1,400 tons is a sizable amount that was removed. In addition to that, EPA did their own testing. So this is beyond a private LSP, O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin, and went and determined the source of migration from the site, where it went to, the levels in the surrounding properties, air quality in the buildings, and things of that nature. Following up on that, we continued to plot a chart. And for those of you, some of you are very familiar with environmental conditions. For those of you who aren't, when you start a process, there's no clear path you take. You start, you try to understand the scope and magnitude, both geographically, wide depth, and the type of contaminants, to see how best to attack them. That's the process that O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin, 401 Liberty, and the City have taken together over a number of years. 401 Liberty's involvement has been eight-plus years, going back, as I said, to 2013, and the City's 11. Now, there are four major areas that we've identified, which are common to the questions that have been asked, which I think will hopefully shed a lot of light to some of the, what I would say, misconception that people have, many of which were preliminarily addressed by DEP in the letter dated January 21st, 2022, which again is extremely important because it does two things. Number one, it's independent regulatory bodies opining on it. But number two, it corroborates what O'Reilly and Talbot and Oakin have been doing, and it's in line with the path that we've taken, both the City and our consultant. Now, the first of the concerns is the air quality concerns, and we'll come back to talk about air quality within the buildings. When we started off, there were approximately seven buildings on this 11-plus acre site. And I'm using approximate, so just for discussion purposes. There was approximately 6.6 acres that was deeded out for the park. The remaining property stayed with Unit A and B. Unit B being owned by the City, Unit A being owned by a private entity at the time, Lund Silver Smith. At the time, there were several buildings, seven approximately seven buildings, plus or minus. As you now see the site, there's several that had been demolished or removed for a whole variety of reasons, including environmental reasons, but more importantly, flow of the site, commercial viability of the site, and to make it attractive to the surrounding area. The air quality aspect will be addressed, and within that context, we'll address active versus passive systems, why one might be preferable over another, why particular one was used in this site, and what the thought process is with that. The goal here again is to try to provide information to hopefully alleviate any concerns and address specific questions. The next one is the soil contamination, which is separate and distinct. And we're talking about the actual dirt in the ground, which is important, and to understand how the soil contamination has been dealt with, what the soil contamination is now, and how it is to deal with it going forward with the use of, with the active use limitation, which is a vehicle that is authorized by Chapter 21E, which is something that's recorded in the Registry of Deeds, which puts limitations not only on the owner of the property, but on tenants and all people who come in contact with that property. So for example, if your AUL restricts the use of the property to only commercial, you cannot put residential. If it restricts it in some other manner, you cannot violate that now or in the future unless the condition is remediated. And that's something that gets reported with the deed. It conveys from one owner to another, and it's something that has severe penalties if, in fact, you don't comply with the requirements. It's also something that's audited by DEP on a regular basis. Often times, a few years after the AUL is in place, and then there's periodic checks. Now, I use the word audited, and I wanted to spell what I believe to be sometimes the misconception that an audit is something negative. In this particular scenario, we've worked in partnership with EPA and DEP, which means there's been full transparency. In fact, we've consulted them on most of the things we've done before we've done them. And before we received this PIP application in preparation for filing an AUL and our final remediation closure plan, if you will, we went to DEP and asked them to review our plan to provide input and to be actively involved. As is common with DEP, they often don't do that because they have a number of things, and they figure they'll deal with it in the review process, which is otherwise known as an audit. I think you're all familiar now, or review process is being undergone, is ongoing, excuse me, by DEP, which is something we couldn't be more pleased about because it gives us two, it gives a guidance in two ways. Number one, affirmation that the way we're approaching it is correct, and that it's something that is in compliance with both the law and the CMRs, which is the Code of Mass Regulations, which is really the underlying operative laws, if you will, that people have to follow. And number two, if there are additional things we need to do, we'll take those steps and deal with them. This same process for understanding how we went about doing is a process that we did in a Springfield site for a set very similar use that was done over, I want to say 15 years ago, also subs abuse facility. It was done again after this site in another location in Springfield, and again, went through four sets of environmental teams because it was sold subsequently through the process. Both sites were audited by DEP. Both sites came back compliant. And to date, there's never been one risk issue to any occupant, tenant, or other person either of the sites. Similarly, in Greenfield, we've had no claim of any occupant, tenant, passerby, or any adverse condition affecting anyone, which delves into the fourth issue. The third issue is the neighboring properties. I talked about the soil. So the next issue is the neighboring properties and whether or not there's a potential in the future for problems there. I'm going to give you a layperson's generic answer to that, and DEP has already put it in their letter, as EPA has also defined. The source, the majority of the source that generated the contaminants has been removed. The migration of contaminants is caught in a catch basin and dissipates before it has any impact going through the catch basins. There have been no tests near the neighboring properties that would suggest that there has been any ongoing mitigation. And I will let Bruce talk in more detail in regard to that. That gives you, I think, a little bit of an overview of what we're going to discuss here today. I also want to talk about the process for a moment. So our goal here today is again to provide information, listen to concerns, and answer questions. I don't know if everybody can just, I don't know if you think that mute might help with that static. Can you all hear still? Men's, the men's, yeah.
It's too staticky.
It seems to have just gone. I just want to talk for a little bit about the process. So there'll be a 20-day comment period after this. Anyone who has additional questions, the same questions, is welcome. We provided in the initial letter, an email, an address. Feel free to communicate those wherever you want. We will include those in our PIP response. We will answer each question individually in writing, as we're required to do. And that's something that can take place after this meeting today. So some of you may want to listen and hear and maybe grasp what we're saying. Some of you may want to actively participate. That's up to each one of you, how you want to proceed. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for a minute. With me is another attorney from my office, Sam Prickett, who is going to walk us through the four major areas, three to four, depending how you break them up, along with Bruce. And Bruce, I don't see your name on there, but I know you're on. So I just, remind, just confirm you're on this call.
I'm on. All right. I'm just muted. I'm going to mute.
Okay, so Bruce again is our licensed site professional. And I'm going to turn it over for a minute to Sam and Bruce to walk through with you some more specifics and get into a little of the data because some of this becomes very technical. So rather than me confuse myself and everybody, I'll allow the experts to talk about it. So with that, Sam or Bruce, whoever wants to kick it off.
I'm going to kick it off, you know, very shortly to summarize the four issues that we identified from my conversations with some of the petitioners, some of the councilors, as being, I would say, just, you know, a high-level summary of the largest concerns that people had that were most prevalent, you know, throughout all the conversations that I had with other folks. Number one being the air quality concerns and levels of TCE reported specifically on the Phase Two Environmental Report put out by O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin. Secondly, being the difference between active and passive systems for controlling the levels of TCE in the air inside the site, and, you know, why one was originally discussed and what a different one was then used. Thirdly, being soil contamination.
Sam, you have a little bit of feedback? Sam, you have a little bit of feedback? Am I talking now?
Sorry, do I still have some feedback?
Yeah, I think that's a little better.
I hear you clearly.
It might be because we're the same. Okay.
Okay. Thirdly, being soil contamination. The, you know, the amount of contamination, where the contamination is, is the contamination spreading in the soil? You know, what has been done about it, what needs to be done about it, et cetera? And finally, you know, the migration of TCE in the groundwater or, you know, other contaminants in the groundwater, are those leaving the property? Are they migrating off property? Are they affecting properties outside of, you know, 298 Federal? So after, with that summary, I'll turn it over to Bruce to kind of go into more specifics regarding those, regarding those issues.
Thanks, Sam. And anybody who's not probably, anybody should mute who's not. That'll help with the feedback. The first question that air quality concerns, indoor air. And there's tables in the Phase Two report that shows that the, what we call exposure point concentration, which are essentially an average. After we install these subs lab systems, or the, you know, the system below the floor, we go through a year of indoor air testing, and we need to see seasonal changes. Typically, winter time, you expect to have the worst-case conditions because everything's closed up. And then, but you also want to see spring and fall, and you get an average concentration, which we call an exposure point concentration. And it was pointed out that, you know, these are at times above residential and even above commercial threshold values. So if you look at a table in the Phase Two, you'll see on the right-hand side, the average, the EPC, and then the threshold values. It's important to note that threshold values are not standards set by EPA or DEP. They're considered screening values that indicate that a LSP needs to, you know, pay attention and, you know, evaluate what's going on with those concentrations. So the actual calculation of exposure risk based on the concentrations, the EPCs, are complex. But the risk characterization in the Phase Two report, and I'll give you specific page notations, pages, pages 620 to 622 of this characterization. That's an appendix. Appendix J of the report has these calculations. And then Table 14, page 680, has a summary of these. And if we look at Table 14, we can see that risk assessment shows that what's called the hazard index, the HI, and the excess lifetime cancer risk, the ELCR values, are below Mass DEP's requirements for indoor air inhalation of vapors in the residential rooms and in the offices of the buildings. So that's a very important point. We, I know there's been talk about residential versus commercial, but we actually meet, you know, residential indoor air concentrations and can document a condition of no significant risk for inhalation exposures in the buildings. And residential risk assumes a, you know, a resident would be, you know, in the building 24/7, 365 days a year for 30 years. And, you know, that's not the exposure we're dealing with in the building, but as I said, we meet that, that criteria. If you look at that Table 14, which says
Bruce, if I can stop you there for a minute? I just want to make clear to everyone. So you're saying that the air quality within the buildings meets the residential standards, is that correct?
Yes, in the residential rooms and even in the, in some of the offices, it meets residential standards, yes.
So could you explain, because I think it's something that's commonly either misunderstood or not known, what is meant by protective versus preventative in the requirements of Mass DEP as they relate to that? And specifically, I'm talking about air quality.
Protective versus preventative?
Yes.
I mean, I guess, because I'm not following you, Rafer.
Well, you're saying that it meets the residential standard, correct?
Yeah, I mean, our hazard indices are below the residential standard, yes.
Well, many of the questions we've had is the difference between the belief that it doesn't, the air quality meets a standard other than residential. And you're telling us the report and the filings DEP demonstrate that it meets a residential level within all buildings in which need to be tested, correct?
Yeah, and if people want to see that in text, they would look to page 620 to 622 of that risk characterization, and that is a summary of the cancer and the non-cancer risks and speaks to, you know, inhalation, inhalation risk. That table, Table 14, also shows that EPC calculations for soil contamination exceed Mass DEP standards. So these are typically metals and some TCE in soil. So that's evaluating possible ingestion of soil. And that shows that while it exceeds the Mass DEP risk-based standards, and so that's why we're talking about having an AUL in place as part of the permanent solution that would limit excavation or control any excavation if it were to take place and disturbance of the soil. And the AUL also speaks to, I guess, protecting or, you know, maintaining those subs lab systems, you know, what needs to be done to make sure that those are intact and continuing to function as they should.
Can you explain some of the assumptions that you make when you're determining the type of contaminants in a soil? In other words, what's to be assumed? Is it to be assumed that someone touches it, digests it? What are the assumptions that you look at when you're
It's, it has to be ingestion, which, you know, is, you know, assumes, you know, for a resident assumes, assumes a person ages 1 to 30 years old, five days a week, 30 weeks a year, actually ingesting a certain amount of soil from the property, 100 milligrams per day, something like a hundred, hundred milligrams per day, something like that. So it also covers, you know, possible uptake by, by vegetables. So that, you know, the resident could have a vegetable, you know, a, you know, a vegetable garden and, and, you know, we, we wouldn't want, you know, residential growing of vegetables in, in the soil at the property. It's, most of the soils are, are under pavement. And the AUL would require a soil management plan, you know, if you're gonna do, you're gonna do excavation and, and, and construction. Does that cover that? Should we talk about active versus passive systems?
Yeah, I think keep presenting and, and.
Okay, all right. There were a question about, you know, an active versus passive. Why was, you know, early on, I, I think perhaps people saw that it would be an active system, an active system meaning a system that's got pumps, air pumps to, to move the air through. So pipe underneath the floor slab and, and pumps to pull the air out. And I guess I'd say that we knew this would be a challenge here. We knew we needed to control the air, the indoor air. We didn't know exactly how we would do it. There are a number of ways to do it. And at this property, very shallow groundwater. So a standard, I guess, active system, similar to a radon system, if any of you have those in your homes or, or seen that, pipe below the floor and, and pumps to, to pull air out, creating negative pressure below the floor and, and to prevent radon or, or any volatile compound from getting into the indoor air. Here, we had very shallow groundwater. And, you know, if you, if you create a trench, put your pipe in it and then create pipes to the, you know, up to the, to the roof line, you, you can't have that fill up with water. It's not gonna function. So here, the entire floor of Unit B, the basement, there's, there's a basement there. The entire floor was covered with about a foot of gravel. You know, very, very porous gravel. So it's not soil that is tend to be less porous, but it's actually very porous gravel. Six-inch pipe and then that pipe up through a number of, of vertical pipes that goes up to the, up to the roof. Because, and so that keeps it above the water table. And because it's so porous, instead of being soil, it's so porous because of all the, the, you know, the open pores between this crushed gravel. We found that it could, it operated, it could operate passively and we didn't have to have pumps to, to move the air. And so I guess I'd say, you know, that was, that was the, that was the innovative solution to what's a pretty tough site. But the entire floor of Unit B covered with this, this crushed stone. And so now the basement is really, you know, just fairly, fairly, not very, not very tall. It's about four feet tall because they had to add this level above the, the basement floor.
So Bruce, just as, as alternatives said, if I understand what you're saying at the outset, you look at possibilities, would it be active or passive? Active, the perception is, is more effective, which in reality is not necessarily the truth. And here, the passive system was hundreds of thousands of dollars, at least substantially more, ten times more than an active system, which have been an easier, cheaper solution, including removing the entire concrete floor of the basement, dredging down, putting in this filler, putting a new ceiling floor over it with multiple vents going up through the roof line, which was substantially more expensive. Do you feel that the passive system is performing better than an active system would have, would have performed?
Well, yes, because I don't think we could have really installed an active system in a trench. I mean, I, I just don't think there's a reason for an active system. And, and I like that this, that this operates, you know, without, if, if you lose power, this, this system still, still functions. I, I like that. It's, it's connective flow. And, you know, I, I, it's.
Let's follow up on that point because some of the questions that we've been receiving is, well, why not have a belt suspender's approach here? Why not put an active system on top of a passive system? And, you know, would it, would there be any discernible benefit? Is that something you could even guess at at this point? What are your thoughts on that?
I, you know, I guess I, I just don't know that it would improve things. I, I think, I mean, we're talking about, you know, yes, we, we can measure, we've measured TCE in the indoor air, but we're talking about parts per trillion, or I'm sorry, parts per billion concentrations, very low concentrations. I don't know that it would improve it.
Like, let me ask it a different way. Since it's already compliant with the MAC, with the Chapter twenty-one E and the CMRs as far as residential level, isn't it fair to say that the hundreds and hundreds of buildings like this out there that comply with the residential level that are at a zero? In fact, it's very rare something to be at zero. Am I, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, I think you usually, when you run, you want to get to no significant risk and I think it's probably unusual to get to absolutely nothing. It's just a function of, you know, laboratories, they keep lowering and lowering what they can see, their detection limits. And, and, you know, now we're at the, we can see down to parts per billion.
Fair to say that you've achieved a no significant risk at the property. It's been that way for a number of years.
Yes, that's true.
Now, another question that's been asked is, is there a need for more air testing? Is there any regulatory requirement for more air, air testing at that site?
I'm not following, you know, DEP guidance. DEP has a, a very lengthy guidance document on how we, we assess and, you know, remediate and, and regulate, you know, sites like this where vapor, what we call vapor intrusion is a, is a potential issue. And so they've got a very prescribed method of, of evaluating whether the system is, is functioning. And after you go through the testing that you do and, and the year's worth of, of testing and, and we, in this case, we tested, we did two of our sampling rounds during winter heating conditions and another one in the spring and another one in the fall. After you go through that and show that you're, you're at no significant risk, you, you know, you, you've got to maintain the system so it's controlled within AUL if, if there's, you know, inspected annually. But if there are no changes to it, no, you don't do additional, additional testing. You, you, the system is, is doing its job.
And I, and I know I've thrown a bunch of questions at you, so I apologize for that. I'm just trying to narrow it in. I know a few people have a five-thirty deadline, so I'm trying to be cognizant of time. Maybe now go to the next issue. You started to talk about soil. I wanted to talk about soil a little bit more as it relates to third-party sites.
Okay. Well, soil, we're, I mean, we could control the soil contamination by, by, I mean, it was really EPA who did a lot of, if you've seen the figures in the Phase Two, you'll see it's, it's, there's a swarm of testing locations. And they really identified two major areas with the highest concentrations of, of metals and also TCE. And then a few other spots around the site, most of them were below, they have the, these air controlling units that were taking dust out of the air and, and the soil below those were also had, had, you know, higher metals concentration. So they excavated those areas. You know, that's, at a site like this, that's really what you do. You go after your real hotspots or your, your, your highest areas. But, you know, it, the rest of the area, it's, you, you, you really look to control it with something like what we're doing, an activity and use limitation. It's, it's, you know, lesser concentrations that are, are around the property. You typically wouldn't remove all the topsoil. It's just not really feasible to think you're gonna, you know, do something like that at a, at a, at a property like this. You control it with an activity and use limitation.
And how about in relation to it, any of it potentially contaminating a, a neighboring property?
Well, no, so, you know, metals are, are not, tend not to be, tend to stay where they are. They, they're, they don't tend to be water soluble and, and move in groundwater. We don't have a, a, a metals issue in, in groundwater out here. It's, it's, the soil is, is, you know, related to the, to the manufacturing areas. And that's, those are the areas that we, we're, you know, the worst places were addressed. And, and the rest, as I've said, is dealt with through limiting exposures.
Okay, and, and there were a couple of other questions in regards to the tenant or the users. It's fair to say that at the time this was done, they were, the tenants were notified of the condition of the property, the plans and, and how we were proceeding with it, both by your office and, and otherwise, correct?
Yeah, indoor air sampling results were given to the tenants. They, I mean, they're, they're, they were very busy and, and I don't think it was their primary concern, but we did pass them over.
And, and in regards to, and I'm trying to just incorporate as many of the questions that came in in regards to the thought process of how we move forward. There's one thing that DEP put specifically, and I just want to focus because they put it in bold language in their letter under paragraph seven, and they said that the residential dwelling does not mean a structure with transient use such as a hotel or hospital. And they talk about massive, mass, I'm sorry, MCP definition of a residence dwelling is as follows, and he gives it. Can you explain what that is, what the, what the distinction is and, and what that means in this context?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a, I mean, I guess the, a residential setting has the highest potential exposure, highest potential exposure. I mean, they have the lowest standards and, and, but, you know, when we look at exposures, we don't, we, we do sort of divide them into residential and commercial industrial. And this clearly falls in the, in the commercial realm. And it's definitely, you know, I mean, I, the closest thing you could think of is, is a hospital, I suppose. But we looked at, you know, it's, there are people that are coming and working for, you know, this is where they work, but they don't, they're not residents here. And then there are people that come for, for a shorter period of time, but they might be here twenty-four, seven. But, but that doesn't, that doesn't constitute a residential use based on the, on the, the, the regulations that we're following.
Which is both the regulations of the, of mass DEP, the MCP, as well as we also dealt with the town zoning laws as they relate to the type of use. So it coincides with both, both use requirements, correct?
Okay, actually, I'm not, that, second part, I'm not.
Yeah, second part's not your part, but to question with that, so I think I'm adding the legal side on that side and you give the environmental side from MCP. I think that that would, and, and Bruce, unless you have something else specific, we can take questions first from elected officials, though I know have other public meetings. And then we can open up to others if there's anything that they would like to ask, and then we can come back and give further comment.
It was one other thing about migration, like TCE migration.
You can comment on it, Bruce.
Oh, okay, I mean, I think there were, I talked about soil, metals and soil, but, but, you know, there, there's a, you know, TCE in groundwater. And if you've seen, if you've seen figures from the Phase Two, there's what we call a plume. So dissolved TCE in groundwater that moves, moves towards, is it Norwood Street, the, the street to the, I believe it's to the south. And that gets intercepted by the sewer system, the stormwater sewer system. And so it's actually, that actually serves as a sink. And when we test the catch basins running down the street, we do find, we did find low concentrations of TCE in the stormwater. We trace that to its discharge point with the river. And we find that the TCE concentrations drop as we, as, you know, from catch basin to catch basin to the point where it dissipates before it gets to the river. I think that's a combination of probably some volatilization, but also dilution. Other catch basins are, or storm, or I guess groundwater that's not, doesn't have the TCE is, is entering that sewer. And other, other arms of the, the storm sewer are, are joining. And so you, we don't have TCE in that stormwater by the time it, it gets, you know, a mile or so down, downstream. And that really prevents TCE from flowing across the street. And we have wells, monitoring wells on the far side of the street that have, you know, nothing in it. There, there are no TCE. And that's proof that we don't see this crossing the street.
And with the benefit, I know this PIP is unusual in its timing. It's coming, you know, almost eleven years after the beginning of it, of the remediation efforts. Would you, do you have the benefit of hindsight now that you would expect to see migration if there were going to be a problem?
I guess I, yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I, it was, you know, I, I, I think DEP actually talks about it in their letter, but.
You do on page two and three, it's a second question for the response.
Yeah, I, it was, you know, when we were earlier asking them to comment, it was something that I was curious their thoughts were on this. We've certainly known, we've, we've known of this mechanism for, you know, a number of years that that's what was happening. It's clear that that's what's happening. As a hydrogeologist, we can see that that's what's going on. And this, maybe it's fortuitous, however you want to say it, but, but that's what's, that's what's going on here.
I guess to say it another way, Bruce, the end result is, based upon all the data, all the testing, it's clear that there are no TCEs moving or contaminating any other site, neighboring site since the efforts of EPA and DEP back in two thousand, I think it was fourteen, if I remember correctly, it might have been fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, this is a mature, mature plume. I don't see things changing. And I, you know, those letters that EPA provided that, that's, I think the homeowners had said, you know, there's, there's not an issue here for me to be concerned about. I think those are still viable and still apply.
That's what I meant by hindsight, mature. I probably shouldn't, I didn't use the proper term, mature plume. But that's what I, that's essentially what I was getting at. Okay, is there anything else at this point? Or should we allow, I know it's getting close to five, allow some of the elected officials of other commitments to ask any questions they may have? Bruce?
Are, are you asking me? Sorry.
I said, is there anything else you want to add at this point?
No, no, I, I don't, I don't believe there is.
And I'm not sure, I apologize. Those of you who are elected officials have other commitments. Just someone, if you have a question, please ask it and just let me know who you are. Please say your name. We understand who's talking.
I'm Counselor Disorga. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So I just heard Mr. Nicholson say that he didn't feel as if there was migration of TCE, the monitoring wells, one oh one and one oh four on Kenwood Street have actually increased between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and forty percent. They were tested in two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and nineteen. One is opposite Unit C and the other is further down towards the ball fields.
Are you, are you referring to something in the Phase Two that you can tell on the page so that he can, he can respond? Where are you getting this data from? If you can.
It, it, his face to report.
Right, what page?
I'm sorry, I don't have the page. I have it printed out. And I don't have the page number in front of me. Monitoring well one oh four. In two thousand and thirteen, it was nineteen. in two thousand and thirteen, it was nineteen thousand, nineteen thousand micrograms of.
I don't, I I, we can pull the report because it doesn't, it doesn't give you the conclusion you're asking, so I'm just trying to give Bruce the information you need so I can respond.
Okay.
What monitoring wall, uh one oh four, is that the only well, is there another one?
Uh, no, there were um two, monitoring well one oh one and one oh four, actually, if you look on um I think I referred to that with Attorney Pritchard, he would be able to help us with that.
Yeah.
He's on the line and.
Right, he's on the line, um but you didn't, if you could give it to us in writing, because we'd like to ask him, Bruce, if he can answer you. Bruce, if you're able to go on the report, Bruce, if you can answer, if it's gonna take a while, instead of another question, we'll come back to that one in writing now that we understand.
Uh, Bruce, Bruce and Ray for and Counselor Disorga, I believe she's looking at uh pages, page six twenty seven, possibly six twenty four to six twenty seven.
Thank you, Attorney Pritchard. And I, while he's looking for that, I had another question about when the occupation of the initial occupation of B H N, the the first unit. In eight, this was, and I can actually hold this report up for Mr. Nicholson, so that he'll know what it is. It is your release abatement measure, it was dated April twenty ninth of two thousand and sixteen, okay?
Yeah, I I, unless someone's got better eyes than me, what's the date on it? I can't see that.
Okay, April twenty ninth of two thousand and sixteen, it was a twenty four page report done by Mr. Nicholson.
What's the title of it?
It's um a release abatement measure plan, it was a a plan in which he delineated how he was going to put in an active system, but I'm just going to go to this. In written correspondence within this plan, you notified the mayor, the Board of Health, and the mass D E P of your plan to install an S S D S and thoroughly test the air quality of the Franklin Recovery Center prior to occupancy. That did not happen. Did you ever notify the Board of Health or the D P that you were opening a residential treatment center prior to doing the safety testing you had outlined, and that is required per M C P, M C P vapor intrusion guidelines? And I asked this, I believe I asked that of Attorney Pritchard, um who authorized the opening of the Franklin Recovery Center in early July of two thousand and sixteen, before the vapor intrusion pathway was eliminated and before any indoor air testing was completed. After you did that indoor uh indoor air testing after the unit was fully occupied, you indeed did have to fill out a two hour I R A to the mass D E P because the level was so high in certain areas.
Are you asking a question, or you, are you, I'm just trying to.
I'm talking, I'm talking, and I did ask, I I asked a couple of questions.
I know, that's why I'm just trying to break them down so you can answer.
Okay, sorry, okay.
So the the first one is, your your question is, um you have this uh April twenty ninth, two thousand and sixteen report, and you're asking why uh uh passive, are you asking why passive down and active, is that the first question?
No, no, I'm asking about the occupancy of that facility prior to any testing. We send all kinds of notifications to the mayor, the mass D E P, and the Board of Health saying that this active system was going to be installed, and that everything was going to be checked prior to occupancy, and that was not what happened.
Um, I I don't know that I agree with you, but I'll let Bruce, this is uh in response, Bruce, to why is it that occupants are allowed an S testing is going on? If you could explain the process of how many times you have to take a test and under what conditions in order to comply with the D P requirements? You're on mute, you're you're on mute.
Okay, um, I'll say that, you know, this it's it's difficult in cases like this, you know, when there's a construction project going on, um doors are open, construction workers are going in and out, there are no windows in the building, it's very difficult to test the indoor air under those circumstances. And then when you get the building constructed, um you can't really just leave it, you've got to go through a year's worth of testing to show that your your system is doing its job. You can't really just leave it vacant, and and it's not in use, it really needs to be in use. Um, the levels that we have were.
Well, Bruce, let me stop, explain why it needs to be in use about people coming and going, how the 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 air temperature changes, what impacts it has, so people understand.
You want, you you want the um the building to be in use for its intended use, you want the the H V A C systems to be operating. You want to be being used as it would be used when when people are there, so you can't really, you can't really uh do the the um uh testing that's really representative of of its use until it's it's being used, and yes, there was T C E in 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 the indoor air, they were not at imminent hazard concentrations. They were at park for for um rebellion concentrations, we, when the building was starting to be occupied, we tested. Uh, I went to D P, I sat with uh the head of emergency response, Dave Slowick, and said, you know, I this could be an imminent hazard, we've got these indoor air concentrations, um we'd like to declare a, declare a a I R A condition so that we can, you know, do this installation as an I R A, and that's what they thought made sense. They weren't particularly concerned. You know, I mean, at the concentrations, we're talking about long-term exposures that we worry about, not not just a matter of you know, a few weeks or something like that, so um you know, it's it's uh it's it's just the way these things are done, you 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 perform your testing while it's being used for its intended use, and unless it's unless it's a true imminent hazard condition, you go about, you know, the the continued use. I I pulled up, getting back to the, I think the question on the monitoring wells is that the the wells that um Counselor is talking about are on the side of the street where they're being, where that groundwater is being intercepted by the um by the sewer system, not on the, not on the south side of Kenwood, Kenwood Street, I'm looking at as she mentioned, I think monitoring well one oh four, I don't know, and one hundred, and those are both wells that are on the upstream side of that that uh that stormwater system. I, you know, we may have early on used the term sub slab depressurization system, or you know, getting back to that concern, but I, you know, I I guess I'd say again, we knew we had to control the indoor air, we didn't know exactly how we were going to do it, we, I knew that that shallow groundwater was going to be a challenge. Um, I'm very pleased with what was done out there. Um, I I and I think if you look at that D P letter, you'll see that um they're not they're 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 not concerned about it either, but I mean, I guess we'll wait for an audit from them to to see that, but I I guess there's a formal audit, I should say that anytime there's an activity in use limitation, the D P audits sites, so the fact that they're planning on an audit is not anything surprising to us.
Counselor, are there, is there other question that we didn't answer, or he didn't answer, I apologize, I just want to make sure we're addressing your concerns?
So you agreed that the monitoring wells were were higher that they had increased dramatically, but you're not concerned about migration, because it appeared to me that the D P was concerned about that.
Right, before you answer that, I'm just gonna, Bruce, and I know we all commonly use adjectives, but she used the word dramatically, so why don't you look at the data, and you tell us what your thoughts are on, if there's an increase and what it means, if anything, to this.
Tell me which page that is again?
Uh, she added on pages four, six twenty four, between six, six twenty four and six twenty seven is what uh we were told. Um, I I have it here, I'm mine, I'm, I'm not sure if this is already when I'm on six, but my my computer's a little different on six thirty three, so.
Raphael, it it's Phil, uh Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
I think, I think if you look at page sixty five, which is the big pink plume map.
Okay.
You can see uh monitoring well one oh four is um there's a a box for it. Do you see that's sort of right in the middle of the plume?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's three numbers there, I don't know what they mean, maybe you could explain.
Th- those are um concentrations of T C E. And when I look at these, I look at sort of order of magnitude numbers, and that's a big number for T C E, but, you know, looking across the street, we don't have it, and uh that's, you know, part of the evidence that it's it's going into the, getting into the sewer system now, yeah, one oh four, you see a nineteen thousand, then you see an eight ninety. Um, and then you get forty five thousand, I don't know why the eight ninety is so low, honestly, I you know, at times, you know, if a well is uh, these things are are at grade, they have seals at the surface, but the seals sometimes, you know, get hit by a snowplow, if 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 rainwater had gotten in and it was diluted, you know, that that could explain that low number. But the change from nineteen thousand to forty five thousand, that's the same order of magnitude, and so that's not, that's not significant to me. Um, but it's a, it's a big number, um, I mean, look at L S nineteen next to it, it goes from a hundred and seven thousand, and then we've got two rounds that are two orders of magnitude less, thirty four hundred, twenty seven hundred. But, you know, we're within the T C E plume in in those wells, and uh um we've got T C E there.
Um, I just, just to try to keep things in order here, um, the first counselor, the swordness, excuse me, I don't want to mispronounce, um, is that resolve, or at least address your questions, and then we can go to Counselor Elmer, I guess he has some questions. Is that acceptable?
Go to Counselor Elmer, you can come back to me.
Okay. Counselor, did you have any other follow-up questions at this time?
I did, I did, uh, uh, full disclosure, you and I had a telephone chat a a few days ago, and um I asked you, you made it pretty clear that you didn't want to spend any money doing, building anything that the EPA didn't require you to build, and I was trying to make the case that you know, if you could do something that would make the air safer, uh and it didn't cost too much, uh would you consider it?
Yeah, well, I'm like, and I, I'm gonna disagree with you, because what I did say is, I said, I would consider anything after I received the audit, and then I said we could discuss it, and it may make some sense and may not, but I wouldn't make a decision on that prior to the audit findings, that's, that's what I said.
Fair, fair enough, I, that's, that's, that's accurate. The uh, ju- just, just to clarify what an audit means, this is, this is the D P going over the data that we're looking at here, right? Uh, they're, they're, they're not doing any more air testing.
They could, they could.
They might, um, I've, I've had cases where they've come out through a site, and they bring their own sample canister, and they, they want to see what they get.
Yeah, they've done that on other sites, they've gone out and 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 uh double-checked monitoring wells and things of that nature. So that's completely their purview, we can't, we can't talk to that, I can only tell you the regulation allows them to do that, and that's in their purview.
Would it be inappropriate for you, given the concerns that have been raised, to invite the D P to do some monitoring, some air monitoring, because it hasn't been monitored for three years, right?
That's a very common thing because of the protocol, because the levels are so low, that doesn't require further, in the in the makeup, if they feel that it does, they're gonna do it. Um, and and I can tell you that, I I don't know if, I'm not sure if everybody's on at the beginning at the outset, but I wanted to get very clear, we went to D P with all of our information last summer, and we said, here's our information, we'd ask for an internal review before we move forward on this, because we knew that there was uh sensitive issues to people, and and their response was, and I, and I, I can't speak for D P, I I think they have, you know, they're doing a lot, and it's common for them to do it during an audit, they determined, they determined to do it that way, uh but they accelerated their audit in light of all the calls and the letters that were coming in. So I think that that we're very comfortable with the process, we're willing to comply with whatever we have to do, we want a safe site. Um, I've told you, we've been doing this for a long time, and a lot of these sites, uh and we'll do whatever is necessary to to uh meet requirements, and sometimes, many times, we would be on. Quite frankly, we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on that floor, when we could have tried to do some other much cheaper site, I mean, uh mechanism, use, but this was something very innovative, that uh we were fortunate to have a a team with Bruce and the other people there that we were able to brainstorm and 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 put this system in place, and it's, it's worked remarkably, I mean, I think the data demonstrates that. So my answer to your question is, when we were, when we received the response back, we can make some decisions, that, I'm not adverse to it, I'm not against it, but I guess I don't want to rush a process, I want to see, you know, what they say, it's like, you know, uh it it's not, you know, I I want to impress upon all of you, this is something, and you know, and I didn't spend a lot of time on the front end, but we're extremely proud of the work we've done there in eight years, and we filled a site that was vacant, that would have been there for a long time. And we've overcome incredible obstacles, keeping public safety number one, occupant safety on site, uh there, we have a very good working relationship. By the way, many physicians and and well-educated people are in these buildings are aware of these issues, and and this is something that we, we, we try to work in a cooperative fashion with the city, I think we've done a tremendous job, so I don't want that to get lost in the process, somehow we're trying to rest something, this is eight years in.
Fair enough.
To say something?
Sorry?
I'm Counselor Bottomley.
Hi, Counselor, how are you?
And I would like to make a statement, because I I know a lot of people sent in very detailed questions, which have not been answered here. I'm not surprised to hear that you say everything is fine, I'm concerned it ignores multiple experts that we've consulted that have reached very different conclusions. I think you've created a very pleasant fictional narrative and downplayed the significance of T C exposure. I don't find the L S P credible, I find your facts to be selective, and I'm looking forward to you answering some specific questions, we have a lot of people on the line that have a lot more knowledge than me, and I also believe you have a conflict of interest uh by running this meeting, considering you're looking to purchase and run this property, so that's my statement for you, thank you.
Okay, so let me address the 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 statement slash question. Uh, there is no conflict, I can't, I couldn't perceive what it is, this meeting is um being run publicly, being recorded um and being run pursuant to the regulations, um we're openly answering any question that's asked. I I I understand that you may have a different view of it, and we're trying to address the questions that have been put to us, and there's a number of the people that will ask questions, and we'll deal with them. Um, but to make broad um uh statements that lack factual foundations, you have a conflict, it it just doesn't serve, in my view, a good purpose, you have a right to do it, I respect that, um but I, but I also have a right to respond, um and I assume this doesn't require any more of our time, so I'll go to the next person who has questions, um whomever that may be. Yes, uh you're muted.
I just wanted to finish my question, um I had asked you, be- because we had heard uh expert uh opinion that the passive system could be made into an active system, a more effective active system uh with a relatively inexpensive, uh you know, cut the pipe, put a fan in, uh that part relatively inexpensive, but then it involves monitoring for many years, we understand that. You, I asked you whether you'd be uh willing to take a look at what it would cost to do that.
I did do that.
Able to do that?
I have been, and we we think the magnitude, I think you were correct, you had, I think, you told me twenty to thirty thousand, somewhere that magnitude, we think that's probably a a prop, uh appropriate amount.
Per year?
No, no, twenty, thirty thousand, well, if they fail, you have to replace them, you know, initial, that's a a rough estimate, and then you would replace them if and when they fail. And then you would replace them if and when they fail and do the monitoring of it. Um, that, I guess the, the, it goes into the next question you and I discussed. And it's kind of circular because I said, look, we'll look at this, we'll get the audit back and we'll determine if, if there's, uh, a, if there's a measure returned, it's something that we can consider. But what I want, what, and, and just so everybody's clear, I said to you and I'll say to everybody, let's get everybody's input. Let's understand what the E P's saying. Let's understand what everybody's trying to drive at. And if we can find reasonable solutions that, that work for all, then it's something, we're, we're very reasonable people, which we're, we want to be compliant.
If I could just, uh, direct a quick engineering question to, um, uh, Bruce Nicholson. Uh, you, uh, the high groundwater level seemed to you a, uh, insurmountable problem in terms of putting in an active system, if I got that right?
Um, I, I'd say that, that the, the system that you would, you would normally put, if you didn't have the high groundwater, would be, you would cut a trench below the, the basement floor and put your pipe in that. And that wasn't, uh, doable with it, with the high groundwater. So, um.
It, um, I, uh, one expert said that that was actually, the high groundwater could have been diverted and that it would have been possible to put an active system and that might still be possible to turn the passive into active. And then I'm going to stop asking questions. Thank you.
I diverted, I, I mean, I, I guess I can't respond to experts without knowing who I'm talking. I mean, I guess, so you would, you would, uh, I guess I disagree with that. You would, you would de-water the site? You would pump groundwater to lower the groundwater table and then put in your active system?
No, I, I'm not sure. I thought, I thought it was just a matter of trenches.
Uh, so the water's got to go somewhere. So you, I, 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 it, to me, it's, it's impressive to have the entire floor of this covered with gra- gravel and a, and a layer on top of it and pipe that vents it. And it's all happens, you know, using convection, not, not pumps. Um, I, you know, it's, it's, it's an impressive system and looking at the numbers we've got, I, um, uh, I don't know, people are, are stuck on active versus passive, but I, I mean, I'd like that you're not relying on pumps to move the air. Um.
I'm just saying.
Thank you. Time, why don't we go, I, I don't mean to cut you off, Counselor. I just figured we'd go to another topic. Okay, thank you. Um, is there someone else who has a question?
I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry, identify who you are, please.
I'm Marian Bullock. I'm the City Councilor for Precinct Five.
Hi, Marian.
Hi, um, I have two questions actually that don't really center on the like specific T C Es and the remediation and that process. But I work, um, with a program through D P H and through Bay State Health. And so I work directly with many people who have spent time both in detox and stabilization, um, at the lunch site. And I'm wondering two things. I'm wondering what is considered long-term exposure? What is the length of exposure that would, would be considered long-term? And then my other question is that you'd said earlier that you really, you don't want to rush the process. Um, you know, I'm wondering why, why not at this point go above and beyond for the health and safety of occupants and workers? Um, I personally have worked with pregnant women who have done many thirty-day plus stays there. Um, the nature of addiction is chronic. And so there's many people in our community who have spent much time in those buildings since they opened, which was, um, you know, it was very useful to this community to have, to have a detox here. For many years I worked in substance use and recovery and we didn't have a detox here. And so we were happy when that changed. The people didn't have to go far from their family. But my main concern is really that we're saying this isn't a residential program. Okay, but what is considered long-term exposure? Because we do have many people, specifically people who are pregnant, um, and postpartum, who are spending long, long stints of time in that building.
Bruce, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, for, for air exposures, I mean, residential exposure is, is what I was, I think I said earlier, twenty-four, seven, three year and sixty-five days a year for, you know, thirty years. Um, that's, and, and we found that the residential, that, that we're, we're no significant risk for that inhalation exposure. Um, so I, uh, uh, the concentrations we've got, using the, the toxicity data that, you know, is available to us, we don't have significant risk of exposure at the concentrations that we, we see. Um, I hope that answers your question. Uh, there, it was a two-part question. I think that maybe I answered the.
Yep.
The second part was, I think, more directed at four oh one, uh, Liberty. And I, I think at this point, it's not about rushing the process, but we're, we would defer to the regulatory agency and let's, till their findings come back. I, we have, uh, uh, you know, a well-respected team here that have, have done their work. Uh, I think the city and, and four oh one have relied upon that. Um, and we'll get those findings back. We're, we're talking a very short period of time. They're hoping to have it back, you know? This isn't a year out or, or six months. Um, so I think that in light of eleven years, uh, we're, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to keep our minds open and, uh, working in a cooperative fashion with, you know, both the elected officials and the neighbors. I mean, we, we've tried to be a good neighbor and we want to be a good neighbor, um, going forward.
Does that answer your?
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Is there, um, anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question, please, and make a public comment. This is Glenn Ayers.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so far, my feeling about this meeting is that it is a sham. And this is not a meeting to discuss the public involvement plan. This has been a meeting where you've been trying to do whatever you're doing. I have no idea what it is. But it is not a meeting to discuss the public involvement plan. And so I do not consider this to be a legitimate meeting to discuss the public involvement plan, which is what is required by the regulations. The second thing I would like the public involvement plan to address is how to replace the current L S P and hire someone who the community has confidence in because we have no confidence in the current L S P. The twen- the, the phase two for this project was done in twenty twelve. It recommended putting in an active sub-slab depressurization system, a groundwater collection and treatment system. There were cost estimates, preliminary cost estimates for those things. Those things, those two things were included as a lease condition in the lease for this property. And they still are a condition of the lease. Neither of those things have ever been installed. The passive system is passive and it, it does something, but it is not adequate. The goal of this entire thing should be zero exposure. Zero exposure equals zero risk. What you're doing is intentionally exposing people because you're failing to put in adequate controls on this property. You're not controlling the groundwater contamination, although this L S P is somehow claiming that a storm drain is functioning that way. That is completely absurd. That is the, the most ridiculous thing possible to have a professional provide that kind of an opinion. This site has not been adequately investigated. It has not had a thorough assessment done, especially of the dense, non-aqueous phase liquid contaminants that go down through the groundwater until they hit a confining layer. That has not been adequately investigated. There is no discussion of where the contaminants that are creating that plume are originating from. Because if you have a plume, that means you have dense, non-aqueous liquid that is below that, that is contributing to that plume. And that plume is not being controlled right now. It is continuing to migrate. It is continuing to contaminate the buildings. And none of this is being done properly. The phase three should have been done in late twenty twelve or twenty thirteen. It was never done. And yet this L S P has asked for a six-month extension to prepare a phase three that should have been done nine or ten years ago. We have no confidence in this L S P and we want to know how to bring someone in who will actually do the job that needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, uh, I understand you made a statement. Is, is there a question, specific question though, that you want us to answer?
Yeah, yes. What is the process for bringing in a new L S P on this project?
Okay, a- at this point, there is no process for that.
I'll, I'll say that the phase two you're talking about, there's some confusion, um, there, and it's unfortunate the term is used. Um, in both the, the Massachusetts contingency plan and the real estate community, but, but, um, a phase two can be, you know, when you're, when you're evaluating a property, you might do what we call a phase one, which, and just for a real estate transactional purpose. And, um, that would just be history and background and, and, um, no subsurface evaluation. And then a phase two usually entails some level of, of a subsurface investigation. Within the M C P, um, a phase one is the initial site assessment. It includes, um, some degree of soil and groundwater testing. I think that was done in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen. Um, you tier classify based on, on that. Um, and then you go to your phase two comprehensive site, uh, investigation. So, um, there was no need to do what you were thinking of as a phase three back in, you know, two thousand eleven or whatever the date you, you mentioned. Um, so it's different, different terms.
Okay, assuming, um, there are no more questions.
I have a question. Um, my name is Susan Morgaffic. I'm in Butter.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, um, I, my, my backyard, uh, connects to backyards that are on Ken, on, on Kenwood Street.
Okay.
Um, I have dug down.
Just tell me, I just like, cause I, I might know by the street address.
On Forest Avenue. I'm on Forest Avenue. Okay, um, I, and dealing with some things in my yard. We have dug down, oh, around three feet. There is water and I'm not just talking about a pool. It's a gushing stream that is underneath our houses here. I do not understand how the assumption can be made that all the T C E is being captured in the storm drains, knowing what I know about the, the quality of the water flow that is directly underneath my house and that goes, um, and, and that goes, I know, um, through a number of backyards here. Um, and my concern in part is that I grow vegetables in that yard. And I am trying to figure out, is, is this water that is very close to the roots of those vegetables, um, contaminated? And is, and is it, um, is it hurting us? And I would like some, something that explains how, oh, that is, that, um, that has been clarified and how that water is, is clean. Because I don't understand, I can't do, you know, the storm, the storm drain in front of my house gets a little bit of that water. But a whole lot of that water co- comes through without, uh, hitting the storm drain at all. Um, so that is, that is a question that I would really like. I know this, that questions that are put through in this meeting have to be responded to and I would really like that responded to. Thank you.
I'm happy to respond to you, Susan. I, I think you had sent in a letter to the Republican, or what is it, the Republic, the, the local paper asking that question? And I saw that and I wondered where you live. Now, I'm looking at, um, the figure in the report. And are you either forty-five, forty-three or thirty-seven?
Forty-five.
Okay, so you were tested, um, in one of the houses that were tested, the indoor air was tested. And there's a monitoring well directly in front of your house, M W one fourteen. It was tested in two thousand thirteen and it contained no T C E. And there's a monitoring well on the up gradient side. So groundwater flows from Kenwood Street towards Forest Avenue. So monitoring well one oh eight on the up gradient side in Kenwood Street is also non-detect. No T C E, no, no contamination found in it. So the groundwater from one oh eight, monitoring well one oh eight flows towards your house. And so based on that testing, no, you don't have any, any solvent, any T C E in your groundwater. It's, I know groundwater is shallow here, but that's not, doesn't have anything to do with, I mean, that's a natural condition.
I, I guess what I'm asking is two thousand thirteen is, is nine years ago. And I'm trying to, and it seems that there are things that have happened with this building since two thousand thirteen in terms of just the construction that's gone on and other things. And I want to know that this has been tested since. And I have not, I, and I don't have that, I have not been given that information. And, um, I don't think my neighbors who have been given that information.
We, we tested some of those, uh, wells, the available wells, um, I believe in two thousand nineteen. Um, they contain, you know, they had similar, they, you know, contain nothing in them as well. Um, you know, when you're looking at groundwater plumes and hydrogeology, um, this is a mature plume. It's, it's not a moving plume where it's advancing. Uh, I'm, I'm comfortable that that data is still valid. Um, uh, you know, I, I, I don't believe we need another test there to, to show that, um, you know, you now have T C E there or anything like that. Uh, I.
Can I ask why it would not be worthwhile from your perspective to do some other testing? Just to, you know, I'm not, I, I'm not here so that I can yell at you. I'm here because I'm concerned. And can, why would it not be appropriate to do some more recent testing and let the community know what is happening? Because as I said, I got, I have the report. It's, uh, that, um, that I, I got in two thousand thirteen. I have not seen anything since. Um, and, you know, we start hearing that there are other issues that have come up and we don't know. So why is it not appropriate for there to be recent testing that could set a lot of minds at ease, both, both in terms of the indoor air quality in the building and in terms of the groundwater?
I guess I'd say conditions are stable and as a scientist, hydrogeologist, I, when I get a, a well where there's, you know, non-detect, you know, I, usually that's, that's good enough. Um, you know, some of these wells have been sampled a couple of times, but, you know, we were, that sampling that was done in two thousand thirteen was really trying to define the extent of the problem. It was part of figuring out what was going on out there. Um.
For, for the record, because I know this, I know that the questions that are brought up in this meeting must be considered by the D E P. I am requesting that there be testing done on, in, during this period of time to let us know that indeed the things that you found are still true. And that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Duzel.
I have a quick question as well.
I'm sorry, who's, who's talking?
Hi, Chris Clifford. I'm a petitioner that hasn't been interviewed. Um, so Mr. Pellegrino, you represent four oh one Liberty, is that correct?
Uh, yes, well, the city, the city of Greenfield is a joint, uh, PIP presentation between the city of Greenfield.
Yeah, that, that's this, but you, you get paid by, uh, four oh one Liberty. So my, my question is, so you can speak on their behalf, is that correct?
Um, depends on what it is. I can't speak freely on, on, on every issue, but I can speak.
Um, they want to be good neighbors and I think that's a good idea. Will they be agreeable to throwing in some, uh, air testing cans? Can we see what the results are?
The, uh, well, that's been done and I'm, and I'm going to give the same response that we gave before to, um, uh, I apologize.
This is more like a, this is more like a hearing. You're like a defense attorney. This is, this is not good. You're, you're not convincing us. There's no reason to not get some testing.
Okay, Ms. Clifford, my job is not to convince you. My job is to, um, try to answer your question. Okay, Ms. Clifford, my job is not to convince you. My job is to try to answer your question. I'm saying when the audit's coming back soon, we'll see what the requirements are. I said we have an open mind. Maybe it's testing, maybe it's the other request about adding and trying to add an active system.
But you don't.
These are all things, this is discussion, not a commitment.
We want numbers. We want numbers.
Okay, I understand. I understand your request.
The DEP, the LSP gives the DEP information. We're requesting an audit because we're not trusting with the LSP. I'm sorry, Mr. Nicholson, we're not trusting what you're saying. There's very selective information that's being given. There's absolutely no reason why we can't get some testing. There's, if it's a money issue, I don't know what the problem is. But this is, this is just us doing our due diligence.
Which is fine.
Please get the water tested. That's all I have to say. This is, it shouldn't even be an argument. This is being good neighbors. But thank you for your time.
I have one last question. I have to go to Ways and Means meeting. But the Kenwood Building, Unit C, the indoor air testing was, the indoor air testing was in the central and in the northeast, but not in the southwest, the southwestern part of the building where most of, where the highest readings were with the plume. So I would, if we were repeating the indoor air testing, I would like it done all throughout that building because that's where it's the highest. And I'm going to log off and leave my fellow counselors and fellow citizens to be watching the rest of this because I have another meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm just a concerned citizen. My name is Pamela Goodwin.
Okay.
And I'm 73, and I recently went into the DTA office. I was pleased that it was opened back up. And I didn't have to be there too long because she just made copies and said the governor hasn't allowed us to have a sit-down with anybody. So it's limited use. But as a citizen in this city, with all that I have heard from my, from the counselors in town, from everything else, I have to state on the record, I am only briefly in that office. If I had to take all my paperwork and over to Staples and try to fax it to somebody, I wouldn't have been happy. I don't work there. I'm not housed there. I don't have an office in that building. If I did, I would say I'm not coming back in until people really assure me that I'm not catching cancer. And I say that as a person who has survived three types of cancer in my tired old body. And I don't understand why this is so hard. As the previous speaker said, just be a good neighbor. Spend a little money. If something happened in 2012 or 13, we are 2022, and we are like begging for people to be concerned. And I'm done.
Thank you. Your name's not on. I see the hand you have up there. You have your hand up in the air.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my name doesn't show up.
Now, it says City of Greenfield.
No worries. Sorry. Wendy Goodman. I guess what I would like an answer to is where the barrier is to doing testing. Just a simple answer. I mean, we've been hearing everybody asking for it, so I'm curious where the resistance to doing that is, because I haven't heard that from you.
I've said it a number of times, there's not a resistance. It's not, where, the purpose of this meeting is to understand the concerns. We have an audit that's coming out in very near future. We'll insight into that and be able to take a look at it and determine what additional steps that then you will take. I mean, we're not against, as I told Counselor Elmer, I believe it is, I told him, you know, he was talking about adding an active system. I said, we're not necessarily against it. I said, but let's get the feedback from the regulatory agency. Let's understand it. Let's see what the thought process is, then we can make these decisions.
Okay.
I think we're being very reasonable.
That makes sense to me. So what would be the next step of our involvement in that decision-making process? That makes sense that you need to do some more work, but when that decision comes down, how do we get?
So there's a 20-day period following this where additional comments can come in. We obviously have two steps, minimum of two more steps, aside from completing the PIP process and answering questions, which is, you know, very involved. And there may be feedback when we get additional, in response to what's talked about here today. We have to file an AUL at some point. And then we would file for final completion, but the feedback from DEP would probably make sense to have that before we took some of those steps. So, and that's why we deferred. We could have filed the AUL before today. We didn't. Because we wanted to get input from all of the concerned people, understand it, included in what our thought process is, included in AUL if and when we're ready to file that. So we're trying, we're, I mean, you've got to remember, this came in 11 hours, and we're absolutely willing to try to consider all options.
So, and I appreciate that. So what I'm looking at is, I'm hearing a lot of concern. I'm amongst them, but I'm hearing a lot of concern for people that are directly affected that want to know that they're being heard in your decision-making process. So I hear you deferring that decision, which makes total sense to me. But when you come back to make a decision, I think what we would like is that you come back to us and we get to say yea or nay and pursue a process if we're not satisfied with what your decision is. I'm not hearing that there's another avenue for us to take once you make that decision.
Well, that would be included in our response, what our plan is, and you'd be able to see it all, and then take whatever steps. Maybe, maybe we do more things. Maybe we do all the things you're asking. I can't, you know, I think, you know, you have these questions. For 11 years, we don't hear from anyone. Everybody comes about now and wants these additional things. And we're saying, yeah, we're actively working on them. We met with our LSP and his team. We've vetted through some of the questions that we actively went out and talked to hours and hours of time. Sam has spoken with people to get the questions. We've put them all down. We plan on responding to every single one of them, providing them. We are trying to be as transparent as we can.
And I'm not arguing with that. I'm not in a place of distrusting what you're saying. All I'm asking for is you're saying that you're not making a decision based on the input here. I think what we would like is the opportunity.
At this moment, and I can't make that decision.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I misspoke. I misspoke. I misspoke.
No, I just want to be clear about that, because I.
Right. I guess the concern that I hear is, so if the decision that gets made is against what people are asking for, is against testing, what other possibility do we have to make sure that we have a voice, because you're deferring it now?
Well, I think that, look, and I can't advise you on what, you know, that's not my role. But what I can say is, DEP is actively involved in this, and they're the regulatory people who are entrusted with protecting all of us, myself included. So I think we have to have some faith in what they're going to tell us. Maybe they say, hey, you need some more testing. Maybe they say, no, we don't. And maybe we decide to do it on our own. I can't, you're asking me to make a decision on something. I don't have the information, and I can't do that.
No, I'm asking for a process that is inclusive in this, and that's what I'm hearing.
Right.
This doesn't feel inclusive. It feels perfunctory that you're asking for input, but then you're going to go ahead and do what you need to do. What I'm asking for is a process piece that continues to include people.
Agreed. And we have established a site at the Greenfield Library, which does notice well with all of the documents. We plan on providing our draft PIP to everybody who signed up to comment back on, which would include, if it does include a testing, to say, hey, we want testing. And those are all things we have to follow, DEP, and they weigh in on their side, and we collectively make a decision. This isn't us against the neighborhood. I mean, we're landowners too, you know, potential. And we want it to be a clean set as well. We don't want to, we haven't, we've done everything that our LSP and the team has told us to do, and we're willing to do more. But we have to do it in a very methodical fashion, understand, okay, we've done eight years of work. Now let DEP tell us what their thoughts are. Maybe we missed something. I don't know. Maybe they say you did a great job. Maybe they say, you know what, we need some more testing gear, or we want you to put an active system. We don't know what that all commits, but we are actively answering questions and incorporating into our plan, and we plan incorporating. And maybe we do incorporate the testing. I mean, this is, you know, there's different areas of testing. We have a lot of wells. I think what I've heard today, the concentration of, there's two areas. Butters in a very defined area are asking for additional testing. And then you have the air quality in that one specific building, which I'm hearing. Those are the two main things I'm hearing. Please correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to make sure I accurately have.
Yeah, you forgot the Dean Apple. Dense, non-aqueous, liquid phase TCE that's at the bottom of the water. You haven't addressed that, and neither has your LSP. That's Glen Ayers.
Okay, I'm sorry. Say it again, please?
Yeah, you have never properly identified the source of the contamination, the dense, non-aqueous, liquid phase TCE and other chlorinated solvents that go right down through the water table. They do not dissolve completely, and they form pools of contamination. And that's what's leading to this contaminant plume that's on site. And you do not want to do the adequate testing to identify where that material is, and it must be done. You can't do a Phase Three until you do the proper site investigation.
And I'm very confident that if you're correct, DEP is going to tell us that in their audit, which we're going to have in a very near future. So I don't think, I think it's kind of chicken and the egg where we've, I have to rely upon, I'm not a scientist. I rely upon them. They tell us what we need to do. We authorize it. I can tell you that we've never not authorized an action that's requested. And we, you know, and we want to be in compliance with all regulatory and laws, and that's what we're doing. And if there's extra steps we've taken, I think we have taken extra steps already. You know, we don't have to get into, but we've done that. So I hear what you're saying in regards to the source of it, and that's something that certainly will be addressed both through this format and with DEP. I mean, I think we're very fortunate, all of us, in the sense that normally a PIP process starts at the beginning, and DEP doesn't evolve for years later. So there's, you know, there's a regulatory body actively engaged.
We're very, very close to the beginning of this process.
Have you just identified whoever's speaking? Is that Ms.?
Yep, this is Glen Ayers. We have not finished the site investigation. We're very early in this process. We have not come in late on this process. We are very early in the process, much less than halfway through. The Phase Three has not been done. There has been no controls put in place to control the contamination on this site. We are early in the process. Stop saying that we've come in late.
And I don't mean any disrespect for that. I was just talking in relation to the number of years we've worked on the site. So that is not my intent to suggest that, so please don't take it that way.
No problem. That's because hardly anything was done for 12 years since the first Phase Two report was released that identified the need for a groundwater collection and treatment system and an active sub-slab depressurization system, which was also ordered, ordered installed by DEP in 2017, and that system was never installed.
Are there any other questions or comments or anything we can try to do?
I just would like, I just want the public here to know that there are four scientists now that have evaluated this. Three are telling us that there's still a problem, and one is telling us that we're not. The one that's not is tied in with Mr. Pellegrino, and they have, they have an agenda. They have, they want this property sold. The rest of us, the other three and the rest of us, want the people safe.
Who's the one who's tied in with me?
You're working together. You're, in the very beginning, you were.
Are you referring to OTO?
Yeah, you're leading his questions. That's what I'm talking about. He may not be paying you, but you're leading his questions in order to come to a conclusion that everything is fine. There's three others that you keep dismissing. And these three others, along with the community members, all, we don't have an agenda. All we want this property sold to. All we want is to know that our neighbors are safe, that our land is clean. That's all. Thank you.
Just in response to that, the LSP is here on the line now. He's available, and he's able to answer questions. So if, whomever these people are, or if you have them, please ask them. That's why he's here, to answer questions, to try to address concerns. So if there are specific questions, please ask them.
Sure. This is Glen Ayers. I'll ask, why was the groundwater collection and treatment system that was first identified in 2012 and then also identified in 2015 in a study done by Ty and Bond? Why was that system never put in place to gain control over the contamination on the site? Why was it not installed? 10 years now. No Phase Three ever done. Why? Why so long to do what was needed 10 years ago? Thank you.
Bruce? Well, I would say, you know, I don't know about studies to, you're talking about pumping groundwater and treating it. That's not really a viable technology. You know, I mean, it may be used at times to, you know, control a plume that needs to be controlled, but it's, you know, you might use it in a drinking water area. I just don't see the need for groundwater, for plume control here. I mean, frankly, the plume is controlled.
So Bruce?
Yeah?
This is Lyons Witten.
Okay, Lyons. Go ahead.
I'll rephrase the question.
Okay.
Where in the Massachusetts contingency plan does it say that the solution to pollution is dilution is an okay remedy? Because you're absolutely correct. It is, in your words, fortuitous that the stormwater collection system is the discharge point for groundwater along Kenwood. It is very fortuitous for all the people who live across the street. But where do the contaminants go? You've identified where they aren't, but you haven't identified where they did go. You have a mile of storm sewer that's leaky. It's leaky because that's how the groundwater gets into it. So it must also be leaky where groundwater can get out of it. And so the contaminants at the site are getting into the storm sewer through groundwater, and then they're miraculously disappearing. And that part of the Phase Two hasn't been resolved. So I'd like to see a written response as to where in the MCP it's okay that this situation is allowed to be the final solution for groundwater. And my second suggestion is that a pilot test could be done on the passive system, adding a fan, to simply see how much of an improvement you could have on indoor air quality by adding a fan to the passive system that you did construct. And that could be part of your Phase Three. So those are my, those are my two comments. Thank you.
Okay. You know, that question of, you quoted me as saying fortuitous, and I mean, you're right. I mean, we followed this system, and we put wells, you know, some wells along it to see, is it getting out? And what we saw is that we don't think it is. We took, you know, where we had wells, we measured the water in the stormwater and the adjacent groundwater. And it, you know, the stormwater is lower than the adjacent groundwater, so it's getting into the system. And we see a, you know, like a steady decrease in concentrations as we follow that stormwater system until it dissipates completely. You know, I, that question of, is this okay? You know, it's something I wondered, you know, and I, early on, before filing the Phase Two, tried to get, you know, Brownfields people to, you know, because I'm curious, is that, is that okay to have? you know, because I'm, I'm curious, is that, is that okay to have, have it function this way? And I, I don't know the answer, but you know, so there's that. The idea of a pilot test, you know, putting some fans on the, on the system, I've, you know, like a simple radon fan, low, low voltage. Test to see if you get any improvement. Yeah, it's something that we could try. I think the way it's set up, they go right up through the roof. It's a slate roof. And you know, there's that guidance that says you, you want to have the, the positive pressure on a pump on the outside in case there's a leak. You know how you, you have the negative on the inside and then you want your air pump. So they'd have to make more change. It's, I mean, I've been up in the attic of this building and seen the pipes that go up, you know, through the roof. And, you know, could you put a radon fan right up against the roof? You'd, you'd have positive pressure then, but that's something that, yeah, seems like even voluntarily, even saying, you know, this system is good, but you know, maybe without the, the, we're not going to maybe, you know, voluntarily put those fans on. And as your annual check for the passive system, you just make sure they're running. Is that something you could do? If a fan like that stops running, does that create an impediment to the, the natural passive flow? That'd be a concern. Those are things that I thought about. You know, I do think that what Attorney Pellegrino says makes sense, you know, let DEP opine on this because, I mean, you've been audited, you know, you, you, you can't, it's very difficult to sort of tell what they're going to say in an audit. And you might think you're doing something that improves things and they may not see it that way. So I would rather have that. And with an AOL, we're guaranteed of an audit. They've already produced to me, an amazingly comprehensive letter. I don't know if you've taken a look at it. Have you looking, looked at that letter?
It's not up on the public site.
It is. It is on the public site.
I'll go find it then. It wasn't.
It, it responds to, I guess Counselor Ayers sent a, a long DEP and message. And John Ziegler responds to it. It's a very detailed letter. And it's very supportive of the work we've done. So you should know that and take a look at it.
I will take a look at it. Another option for the passive system is you can put a, a weather vane on.
Spinner.
Spinner on top of, above the roof and then you don't have the problem of it being an impediment if the electricity goes out. It does, it does provide, those, those do provide additional suction on the system and.
Mr. Nguyen, where does, where does that go? Does it go on the?
Above the roof.
Yeah, you've probably seen those spinners.
I know what they are. So on, you're saying you could put one on it?
So it's above the roof. So that's.
On the pipe above the roof.
Yeah, no, right. I just finished. So you're above, actually in the pipe itself on the top.
And with that building, it would probably look, you know, industrial building. Thought of that too. If DEP audited and said, you know, we think it'd be a great idea to do something like that.
I mean, that might be an option. That's something we'll, we'll look at, Bruce. And we could, let's talk about these. I mean, that's something I haven't heard. That's an interesting option.
It creates, it, it can create more pressure than just natural convective flow. But you've got to have a breeze flowing to, to do it. And when it's not, there isn't a breeze flowing, it might create sort of an impediment. So.
Yeah. So we got to weigh those pros and cons. Okay. I, I imagine it's just, I haven't heard that. So something to consider. I didn't mean, I didn't mean.
Lyons, does that answer your questions? You're asking, where does it go? And I mean, I think this is a, I think the sewer is a, is a sink all the way. I don't have proof of that, but I think it's a sink all the way and.
I think it's an open question. I don't think the question's actually been answered. You've done some testing. You've done some wells along the sewer. You've done some testing of catch basins, but I still think it's an open question of. And it's, you know, in your words, it's highly fortuitous that it's there, but I don't see how, I don't see where in the MCP it says that it's okay to simply let it dilute and dissipate.
Yeah, I'm not sure it says it's not okay. And that's what I'd like, I mean, I mean,
It's not, it doesn't say that.
You know, the, you know, the cost to put in a pump and treat system? I'm sure you do. And do you really, is that, is that money well spent? Would that be money well spent in this case?
I, I think, I think that you're, you raise valid concerns or issues and something that I'll discuss with Bruce Moore. We'll discuss, I think that we try to accomplish those things. But we can take a look at them again and let your comments. I mean, I, I don't think you're, you're necessarily trying to be unreasonable. I think that you're trying to raise options or ideas, which is a good thing to do. So I'm not against those things that like, I just need to understand them. Because, you know, I'm not, I'm not an LSP like you people and I need to understand what is passive pressure and how it works and how, what's the likelihood of it and what the cost is and, and to go through that whole analysis and we'll do that. So I do appreciate those comments. I think they're, you know, they're valid comments. I, I know your name's not coming up, so I can't, but the woman away.
Okay, good. That's me. Yeah. Hi, my name is Dorothea Melnikoff. I'm in a butter as well. I have a, I actually am on both sides. I have a house on Norwood Street and on Kenwood right across from, it's on a 14 Kenwood. It's a house right across from the facility. I'm not sure how actively that side is used, but yeah, I guess I have concerns about like the long-term issues related to this plume and, you know, the different kinds of things that might disturb something like that and, and change the delicate balance there over time. And I'm just wondering like, you know, how closely and how transparently will this be monitored? You know, once we've gotten through this process over the years. That's one question. But that question is really related to the plume and can there be anything feel more confident that it's not going to cause problems, pollutants to the neighborhood? And to the people, I'm also concerned about the employees. You know, is there any testing that makes sense to do to make sure employees that are there? You know, definitely 40 hours a week, sometimes more, sometimes less, but you know, are they getting followed to make sure that, that, you know, their exposure isn't causing any health concerns? So I guess that's another one of my questions. And my third question, I thank you for your patience is, is there any way to use, like, you know, you see these horrible contaminations that take place? You know, related to, you know, even radioactive materials, et cetera. And they're finding that there is a way to use plants and trees and different things to like, you know, maybe get those things out of circulation. And I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm, I'm not expressing this well because first of all, I'm nervous because I don't, my Zoom is, and these, like, these things are a little new to me, but also you know, just, you know, just looking at different ways to manage this over the long haul. Are some of my questions?
I can answer.
Grandchildren on the block too, you know.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said I have grandchildren on the block too. So, you know, I want to make sure they're okay.
Right. Bruce, I could, I think I can address number two. If you can address one and three. One, I understand is the plume issue. Two and three was the use of plants or trees to somehow be an active, play an active role in this. Two, I think was the testing of employees. And I can tell you right now, there is no requirement to test employees or at any of the sites. That's not something that, that has come up on the radar from, from any source for something of that nature. But I'll let Bruce answer one and three.
When our, our, our testing shows that, you know, there's, there's no significant risk to the, to the employees. The concentrations that we detected, the, so you're sort of wondering if there could be long-term groundwater monitoring to see if the plume changes or if it begins to, if what we're seeing now changes in the future. I guess is what you're asking. Is that, is that right?
That would be, yeah.
And there's no plan for that right now. You know, as part of an audit, if, if DEP were to say, well, we want you to, we want you to, and I don't see a, I don't see a need for that in the MCP, but I'd, I'd like to see what DEP thinks, if they think there's a need for that. I think you're 14 and I know there's a monitoring well right in front of your house that we tested and we had nothing detected in it, no TCE detected in it. It's well number LS 23. And there was the, the house next door, MW 103, the testing in 2019 also contained no TCE. The, I guess it's maybe phyto remediation. I, I've heard of that where plants, you know, are used to pull things out of the ground and maybe the plants are harvested and then disposed in a landfill or something like that. If they pull up metals, I, I don't think there's a plan to do that. And you would need, I mean, this is a paved site landscaped. You know, I don't, I don't see a natural way to, to do that here. You know, if it was an open field, I, I've heard of that kind of remediation, but I, I don't see that as an option. If, if you were to remediate this, you would probably do an in-situ method. The phase two talks about that. I got some cost estimates from a company called Regenesis. They specialize in in situ remediation methods. And I just, you know, wanted what, you know, injecting probably zero valve and iron or, or, you know, some of their compounds to, to knock down the TCE concentrations. But when you do that, you're usually doing it because you're, you're not at no, not at no significant risk. You, you're trying to get to no significant risk. And so if you're going to do a pretty expensive remediation program like that, you're, you're trying to, you, you know, you, you have a problem that you're trying to, to get to no significant risk. And here we feel we are. I, I think the MCP requires that we, you know, eliminate current exposures and, and control any future exposures. And that's by installing the sub slab or the, the, you know, the passive systems, you've eliminated current exposures to no significant risk. And we're controlling potential future exposures with the AOL. Saying that there'll be soil management if there's any construction done. And there'll be, and the, the, the passive systems will be maintained. And when you do an AOL, the DEP regularly comes and inspects. I've heard them say they're on a schedule of every two to three years. They usually show up unannounced. If they show up and someone is, you know, got a backhoe and they're digging a hole in the middle of an AOL area and they're, you know, they're not paying attention to their, their AOL. That's a finable offense. And they come down very aggressively on that. There are not a lot of things they find for, but that, that is one of them. So, you know, I'll say that again, if you have a deed restriction that requires soil management and, you know, health and safety plans and, and things like that, and you ignore that and the DEP finds out that you've ignored it. They are very, they, they bring in enforcement and they're fine. So that's, that's the plan here.
Can I just add one more question about the water? I mean, is there, is there, is there any, what's happening? Why is it dissipating? Like, is it going just into like, you know, again, that dilution question, which came to my mind too, or is it going into the treatment plants? Are there any readings, you know, down further that would, you know, be of concern? Or you said it totally goes away, I think. So none's getting in the rivers or, you know, that you know of or?
Our testing shows that it's not getting into the river. That it's, that it gets into the sewer system. I mean, it's shallow groundwater out here. So if the pipe for the sewer is at five feet and the groundwater adjacent to it is at three feet, it's going to go into that. Most storm sewers have underdrain systems so that, you know, they, they try to, they try to collect the storm water from the catch basins above and, and not so much the groundwater, but they'll have an underdrain system. So it's, it's depressing the groundwater table adjacent to that, to that sewer and it's following it. And we see a, a progression of lower concentrations as we follow that. And we got, you know, the sewer plans from the Greenfield DPW. So we knew where that sewer goes and, and could sample the catch basins as, as it, as it goes towards the river.
Maybe I'm, I, I'm just not scientifically aware enough, but if that, if the TCE goes into the, the storm sewer system and it, 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 it just disappears? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what happens to it. Does it go into the, the, the system that the town of Greenfield has and it's pulled out of that, that system before it goes, out of that water before it goes into the river? Because that's where, that's where our storm water goes. It goes into Green River. I'm just trying to figure out, there's this chemical. It says that, you, you, you know, my understanding is it doesn't degrade? What happens to it?
Oh, I, I think I covered it, but I, I will say again, you know, it's, it's, I believe it's a combination. It is, it may not degrade, but it, it does volatilize. So I suspect some of it volatile, you know, volatilizes. But if that plume is, is getting into the storm sewer in the, in the area right next to the, the, the building, the rest of the, the rest of the length of the storm sewer is also getting groundwater in it. And that's all clean. So, okay, you have some water getting in there that's, that's got TCE in it. But entire, along the entire length of that sewer, I believe, you're getting additional water added. And so I, I think it's a combination of some level of volatilization. I mean, going, going, you know, up through the atmosphere and some amount of, of, of dilution. So that if you, if it comes into the sewer, it's at, you know, 10 parts per million, but you know, a quarter mile down the, down the sewer, a lot of clean water has come, you know, has come in, then it's at five parts per million. And then another quarter mile, it's at two parts per million. That's what I think is, I think it's a very reasonable explanation for what's going on. And I don't think there's any treatment of it. I don't think it goes, I don't think there's a, Greenfield has a treatment system for their storm sewer. I don't believe this. I think this just goes through a pipe into the Green River. But when we sample it there, it's not there. And it's at low concentrations. It's, there are standards for, there are standards for what is sort of okay for a, a groundwater to go into a surface water. And they assume a certain amount of dilution when that groundwater hits the surface water. And we're way, way below those standards for, for TCE. So it's, it's not a environmental concern. It's not an ecological concern, I guess I'd say.
I'd just like to set 6:30 as a stop time. Let's see. Try to utilize the time to let other participants have questions, ask them. And if we have to go, we can go more, but let's try to use 6:30 as a stop time, which is two and a half hour question process, you know. So we could have, if there's people who haven't spoken yet, let's try to address those people first. I don't know if there's any individuals who have questions who haven't spoken. Give you a second to think about it. If you do, just, just, you know, speak up. Okay. If there are no individuals that haven't spoken, are there any individuals that have already spoken that have more follow-up questions?
Yeah, this is Glen Ayers.
Okay.
Yep. I, I have read through the regulations, the MCP regulations that you keep referring to. And the goal of this process is to reduce the onsite contamination, especially something like TCE to the either natural or anthropogenic background levels to the extent feasible. And so, again, this, this was exposed
And so, again, this this was exposed to be contaminated back in two thousand twelve. And the solution at the time was to put in a groundwater collection and treatment system that was also. Uh, the suggestion of a report that was done by Ty and Bond in two thousand fifteen that was paid for by the FERCOG. And yet, here we are in two thousand twenty-two and no groundwater collection and treatment system has been put in place. Which would actually reduce, collect, treat, reduce. And remove that contamination from the groundwater and would pre, it would keep it from migrating offsite. And it would also reduce the amount that is volatilizing into the buildings. That that you claim is being addressed by your passive dent system. None, none of that groundwater collection and treatment control has been put in place now for for ten years. And we want to know why that hasn't been done because. What you're proposing to do is jump directly to a permanent solution with a A U L activities and use limitation. And you have not done a phase three, you have not put in any sort of contaminant treatment system. And you have not done a phase four, which would be. Selecting the treatment system and you haven't done a phase five. Which would be evaluating if that treatment system is actually functioning the way it was designed to function. So none of those steps have been done. We're still back in the phase two. And yet, you're now claiming that you're going to close out the site. That's what you're, that's what you've said. You want to close out the site with an A U L, but none of the preliminary steps that are necessary have been done at this site. You intend to essentially cover it up, walk away from it, leave that T C E contamination onsite. Or let it through your magical thinking, continue to go into the storm drain and then who knows where it goes after that? Everyone knows that the groundwater here in Greenfield goes fluctuates up and down during the season. Dramatically on that site, it could, it could vary as much as ten or more feet over the course of the seasons, the year. And so that pipe sometimes is in the water table, that sewer storm drain pipe. Sometimes it's way above the water table and it's not collecting any groundwater at that point. But once that contaminated water leaves the site. It can go through all kinds of areas, including wetlands. It can go through places where it's above the water table where it can leak freely leak out. Because we know that our sewers and our storm drains in Greenfield. In in a lot of cases are a hundred years old and they leak like sieves. Our wastewater treatment plant goes from a daily flow of two and a half million up to fifteen million when it rains a couple of inches. So we know that we have a very leaky system. So what you're saying here is that your solution to this is to let the contamination continue to migrate offsite. And you don't essentially don't have any control over that. And that is unacceptable. That is not what the M C P Mass Contingency Plan says needs to be done. You need to reduce the contamination onsite to natural or anthropogenic background levels. That's it. And why hasn't that been done over the past ten years, Mr. Nicholson?
Um, you're not completely correct. Uh, there's a feasibility. Um, aspect of the M C P which you're not really seeing. Um. So it's to the extent feasible and they have a guidance on what that means. And so there's a feasibility discussion in the phase two. And cost is part of that. Um, you know, when you you attain, when you reach no significant risk. Um, they still want you to evaluate the feasibility of getting approaching or getting to background and that is in the phase two. Um, and, you know, they have guidance on what is, how you can, you know, whether or not something is feasible. And in this case. Um, you know, looking at the costs and the fact that we're at no significant risk. Um, you know, we can, we can say it's not feasible. Um, it's not unusual within the M C P to close with a permanent solution. Um, uh, you know, after phase two, uh, that's it's set up. They actually want you to do. Um, proactive remediation early on. They don't really want you to just do the phase two comprehensive evaluation. And go to the phase three evaluation of remedial alternatives and the phase four, if you can do it. Proactively as we did here and as has been done here by E P A and by um, you know, by. The work that was done to install the systems, that's what they prefer. So if you can get to no significant risk and evaluate, you know, the feasibility. Um, at the end of phase two. Um, and do your risk characterization that shows you're at no significant risk, then that's what you do. Um, you don't continue through phase three, phase four, phase five. Um, and and that's, I think, um, any L S P will tell you that.
Um, are there any other individuals who have questions?
Actually, I do have one more question. I'm not sure, I'm trying to find what page it is on the seven hundred and thirty-four page report that was filed on four, six of twenty. But I I have a a document here that says estimated E P A contractor costs for the removal action because we're we're talking about feasibility. Um, and granted, it does say the accounting of expenditures in this estimate based on figures known to the O S C at the time the report was written. Um, and anyway, it gives a a ceiling, a cost incurred and a remainder. So the total uh removal project cost was um ceiling was eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. The cost incurred occurred incurred was five hundred and seven thousand dollars. The remainder was three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So we're talking about feasibility. Where does, do either of you know where that money is and can we use that money?
I I I, uh, Bruce, do you know what what page he's talking about? Like, I'm trying to find it, like.
Are you looking at in the body of the report itself? Or you, I know there there's an appendix that has. Cost information towards the end of the report. From Regenesis and then.
Um, yeah.
Bruce and Rachel, this is uh, this is pretty early on in the report, page twenty-two or twenty-three, I believe.
Okay, because I was looking at twenty-nine.
I think it might, you know, it might also be later, that might just be uh, the, sorry, that that might be the uh. Table of contents. I'm looking at, I'm looking at figures. Similar to what was just said on.
Okay, so let's assume.
Page two, page two hundred and twenty of the report.
Let's assume for discussion purposes, wait, hang on, I gotta. Um, for discussion purposes, uh, that you're you're accurate. I'm not aware of. One somewhere uh to draw from uh within that regard, if that's your question.
Was it, was it in the lease with four oh one Liberty that if if costs um. Over three hundred thousand uh or there was something to that effect. I don't have the lease in front of me that. That that would be given back to the town and it just happened to be that there were three hundred and thirty-two thousand. So was that given back to the town? Do you know that?
No, no, if there's, and I don't have it in front of me, but if there's cost over a certain amount. The purchase price changes and there was a C P A documented uh things that went with your prior mayor. They did their review of it. And I don't have those numbers in front of me, but there's a cost shifting in the in the um. Option, which has already been exceeded by plenty. Um, so we're way past that there. If there are additional costs.
Three hundred and thirty thousand, thirty-three thousand is is now gone at this point. There's. Where, like, we're talking about feasibility, certain things weren't done because of costs, it wasn't feasible, but we had. I it may not sound like a lot to you, but it sounds like a lot to me, three hundred and thirty-three thousand.
It's sounds like a real lot to me. I'm not gonna argue that point. Um, no, I guess I'm not following. I guess. If I understood your question and misunderstood it, you you asked two questions. The first one was in the report, you're saying, okay, there was. A a estimate about eight hundred thousand, five hundred was spent roughly and and there's another three hundred thousand that has a possibility of of additional estimates. Um, with regards to, then you asked the second question with the lease. So I can, let me try to answer it in reverse order. There, there's a lease with an option that has um a stated amount in there. I don't recall exactly it was, but you said three hundred thousand. I I it could be in that vicinity. Uh, four oh one was responsible to pay remediation costs up to a level and that offset the purchase, part of the purchase price. Because at the beginning, nobody knew if it's gonna be three million dollars, two million, eight hundred thousand as as was characterized in this. From what you're reading in this report, I don't know what year this was, hang on a minute.
Right, I guess, well, I guess what I'm saying was, was why were certain um. Certain things not done based on, it it wasn't feasible. There were certain actions.
Oh, now I understand, yeah.
And now, yeah, and now there's three hundred and thirty-three thousand left, but but there there could have been um.
No, no.
Please go ahead.
So I think you're, I think respectfully, you might be confusing the two. What that's saying in the two thousand twenty report you're looking at is saying. That these were the uh, some of the estimated costs. This is what's been spent of those and this is how we've done it. Um, because you go about in in any, any. Each decision that we have, the L S P comes to us and says, hey. I'd like to do this, this is what we recommend and this is what we what we like to do. We try to get cost estimates and say, yes, we have to do that. Uh, or I maybe have this alternative one, which is more cost effective, try this one. And that's kind of the process that we went through. Does that, and there's no set amount of money anywhere to like. Uh, Joe, go draw from a grant or something like that. In fact.
Right.
In addition to this, there was about.
How did that offset the cost?
In addition to this, there was um a bunch of grant money E P A used and and did that added to what what was done there. So. The amount was done even greater than those numbers, the total work. If it's if I.
For example, the active system could have been put in along with the monitoring, which they said, you know, granted over a. And I'm just going by memory on this, approximately two hundred thousand dollars for ongoing monitoring, um, anticipating a twenty-year. It was a certain amount and and so the cost effective way was a was a passive system. And so that it, we kind of went around all the monitoring costs and but yet this money left over. So that's kind of where. And and please, if I'm, um, if I'm misunderstanding that, please.
Yeah, let me try to, let me try to respond to that. I thought, I thought we were clear about this at the beginning, but let me try to. I don't disagree with you that an active system is another option and that I I I feel that the passive system actually ended up costing more and we think it works better. The question that, uh, and I can't recall his name, was Mr. Whit, Lloyd, I believe his first name was, uh, raised as well. Could you add? Um, uh, some type of active system to the passive system now? We're talking about cost effective of that. And that's not a a a huge number like two hundred thousand. I understand to be a much lower number. So we didn't say, let's do a passive as opposed to active because it saves us money. We we were gonna, and we will, uh, we could have drawn somewhere. The three hundred thousand is just money that that wasn't incurred during this process, but there's other money that wasn't included in that. So. I mean, I don't know the total cost because we didn't pay for it all. E P A paid for, D P A paid, D P paid. So it's probably greater than that number. Uh, but the eight hundred is not like a pocket of money that anybody's entitled to. Four oh one doesn't get to keep. Three hundred thousand extra. Uh, the city doesn't pocket three hundred thousand, um, you know.
But but it comes off. The cost of the property, right? Is that what you were?
No, I'm not. I I don't think I'm following. Um.
Okay, that's okay. I may, I may be mistaken. I thought it was, you said it was to, it offset the purchase price.
With it at at the beginning, but that was, that that was, it was like. Once we spent over a certain amount of money, and I don't remember what it was, like two hundred thousand, we've been wait, we've been passed that for a long, long, long time. Um, so it it doesn't matter after that.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions? We're we're, we got a few more minutes here. Um, I think we addressed a lot of the questions.
Hi, this is Pamela Goodwin. I have one quick uh question or statement, one second. Um. I want, I won a case with the Architectural Access Board against Department of Housing and Community Development and a housing authority. And it was two thousand sixteen and we're still not done with this. But over and over, they came in and said it's not feasible and we don't have the money. And the board heard it. I can't even tell you how many times we had to go back over and testify. And so I just want to point out, there's a difference between whether something is feasible. That is different from any monetary expense, at least it was for that. So I I don't want people to be confused with what's feasible. And we did win the case and they are gonna have to do it and they kept saying there's no money, you can't do this. Um, and so I'll just leave it at that. I don't want people to think feasibility is one and the same of a monetary issue. Thank you.
I'm just trying to understand your comment. I I don't think we're saying that. I I think I understand the distinction you're making and I I don't. I mean, I I understand your comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Different things and I had to address each of those issues over and over again. They still lost the case.
No, and I can't comment to that case. I can, I think I understand the distinction you're trying to make.
I'm just doing it for a point of clarification. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Um, got a couple more minutes. Are there any other questions?
This is Glen Ayers. Uh, I would request that, you know, you make the uh draft A U L activities and use limitation. Opinion from O T O available for public review.
We we do plan on issuing that and and we plan.
Before it's recorded.
Absolutely. We do, we we we're already doing that.
Okay, and my uh, my final question is, why has the L S P asked for a six-month extension? On preparation of a phase three, when he just previously said that often sites are closed after a phase two. Yet he's asked D P for a six-month extension, which just coincidentally was requested the day after we filed the P I P petition.
Because.
He filed that on December second.
Right, that was more at uh our, when a P I P is filed. It 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 would be, I think, imprudent to try to close out a site without listening to the concerns and trying to. Uh, you know, go through the P I P process. So I think that, you know, out of respect to this process, I think that explains why we requested an extension. I mean, we don't know how long the P I P process would take. Uh, so I think six months was something we thought was reasonable. Okay, um, I think that.
I have a question, actually. This is Counselor Bullock. Um. I'm wondering if there's been any kind of survey done beyond just the water samples to actual. Like people in the community and children in the community to see if there is an increase um of diseases that are associated with T C Es. Um, especially knowing like what I, what I have read in digging through this stuff. I've only. Been on the council. This is my second month. Um, so I'm just digging into this issue, but that, you know, mothers and children. Uh, early childhood exposure is a higher risk for the associated diseases like autoimmune disease, childhood leukemia. Those sort of things. So I am wondering if there is surveillance that's been conducted or is planned or if. You know, that. Do we know, is there an increased level of people that have these sorts of diseases in that in that area?
Um, so to answer, I I know it's kind of a few-part question and a fair question. Um, we're not aware of any increase. It's never been brought to our attention. Um, I don't even know how they would even. Test to something of that nature, but it's not something that we've done during this process. I don't know what the Department of Health has done. Um, I and I do know at one point, um, at the beginning process that we're uh, community people were involved and. Um, you know, asking questions like that are requiring, but I'm not aware of anything and and nothing in the data suggests. Uh, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, that that we take further steps in that direction because I'm sure you would have raised it to us, but please tell me. I think you're on mute.
There you go. Um, no, nothing in the data suggests, I guess, a need for that, but I can tell you. Of a case I'm familiar with in another part of the state where there's a T C E plume and. Concerned residents and there was a request to, I think it was the Department of Public Health who actually. Did a study like that. They they wanted to see if there was a cluster. Um, they didn't, they didn't find that there was, but um. That's how that was done. It's not something that uh we as a, as an environmental consulting firm. As an L S P would would do, but I've seen it done, I'd say. Um.
That's helpful and um. I, you know, the last thing that I want to say, I know we're we're past time here is just that I did have a number of constituents reach out to me. Of um, family members who work, live, get. I did have a number of constituents reach out to me of family members who work, live, get care at the former Lunt site. And I do urge you to really listen, that this is a concern, and it has been a concern of many people that have followed this for years. You know, there was bells ringing when, when the answer was that, I think Susan asked, like, where does, where do these TCEs go? Like, where do they go? And the question is, like, it doesn't, it sounds like they don't go anywhere, right? Like, I'm familiar with PCBs from studies I did in, in college about, like, breast, mother's breast milk and PCB concentration in breast milk. And those don't go. They don't go anywhere. They have to be dredged up and taken out and fully, fully remediated. And so there's, there was bells ringing for me, that the idea is that this dissipates into our river, which is our drinking water, which I went ice fishing with my kids on Sunday. Like, we eat the fish, we drink the water, we live here in this community, and so I
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't think that's accurate. What he said is it doesn't dissipate into the river. He said the, the, it channels in, there are no, they tested at that, there's nothing going into the river.
My understanding was what, how I interpreted what you were saying is that it is a dilute, it's diluted. So where you're, when you're testing with the fresh water that's running in, that the amounts are diluted.
Yeah, diluted to the point where it's not detected, detectable, you know, so we're talking, if we're measuring part per billion concentrations, and by the time we get to the river, we, we can't detect it, a laboratory can't even see if it's there. You know, I
Right now, but if we don't get rid of the source of the TCEs that are in this site, aren't these TCEs going to continue to run off into our river and into our drinking water?
No, that was the point we were trying to make at the outset, that, that because of EPA's involvement and the magnitude of the contaminants they removed, it decreased such a magnitude that there's, that it's less and less, not, not more and more.
No, no, nobody's drinking water with TCE from the site. I, there's no drinking water source near here. I, I don't, that's not an exposure pathway of concern.
So if we're testing the TCEs that are running into the drainage system and into the river, it's not an issue that there is still, there is still some level of TCEs on that site that is not remediated?
It's not an issue.
That's correct. And I, and I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name. I know you had your hand up.
Hi, I'm Norm Hirschfeld. I used to be a counselor for seven and a half years. And I would really request a thorough investigation really of the, the air inside Building B. I think for you not to do this is, is really bad. It's, I, I, I used to work at General Electric in Lynn. And we were exposed to T, T C, tricarotene. And it's, it's bad. It's, it's not something that, someone who has a compromised liver, which many of these residents may have, it's not going to help them at all. It's, it's something that you may not show direct cause and effect. At least over quite a few years, but for long-term effect, you really want a clean building. You don't want people to get contaminated in it. This is a, a really important facility, not only for Greenfield, but for the, the whole region. We really need it. But we need it clean. And we need a clean environment around it. So I, I would suggest to the counselors that you really need to push that this, this building be clean. That the process be followed as closely as possible. And that you, you don't let this be a site that will come back and bite both the, the client, the clients, the staff, and the city. It is your duty to, to make sure it's, it's, it's a good site. We were told that this would be a clean site when it was being developed. And that there was no leakage. But this didn't show. The, the figures are, are such that if you look at the 2018 figures, especially the Building B, it's really bad. So you really don't want these clients in this building to be the canaries in the coal mines, so, so to speak. We don't want this to really be something that's going to really affect people's health. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So with that, I think we're going to bring the meeting to a close. I thank you all for your participation. We will circulate that, the draft PIP. We will, one late written, answers to the questions. And again, thank you all for your participation.
With that, with that in mind, Racer, I'd just like to direct, direct folks to the beginning of the chat. I put my email address in there. If you haven't received a copy of the PIP, or if you have any other questions, or want to, you know, send written questions to me to be addressed, you know, with the final copy of the PIP at some point in the future, you know, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.